It's reaching hour six o'clock, so we will call meeting to order. Pursuant together for Hailies, March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five, order setting certain provisions of the open gaming law. Meetings of the American Open Community Committee will be delivered in person through March thirty first, two thousand twenty five. Agenda items that are listed are those recently distributed by the chair, and now all items to make that be discussed. But if not, it may be discussed when you go out for discussion, be set, permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB, the School Committee Recorder, and will be broadcast. Once subscribed and approved, this will be available to the public and posted on our website. To appreciate the meeting, the whole vote, Corey Sprague.
Yes.
Diane Singer.
Here.
William Fields, here. Sarah Orla.
Here.
Bonnie Bonafoni.
Here.
Jason St. Peter, here. Anne Hutchinson, here. William Boyd. Steve Bannon is absent, and West Sheriff showing his side. We're gonna jump ahead to voting items at this point, and then we'll move back to items to get down the balance of time to order. So first item, we'll call Peter's, are you certain that you're going to vote, and that would be to vote you accept school choice students? So you have like twenty four school year. So each year, I asked the school committee to vote to accept school choice students. We fill empty seats, but I'm very careful, I can be more closer with the principals around this. So if somebody made a motion to vote to accept school choice students for the fiscal year twenty four here, that would be your opinion.
I made a motion to accept school choice students for the year twenty four school year.
Second.
Second.
Hannah, just a second, any discussion, questions? The real vote. Bill's motion is attended by him. Corey Sprague.
Aye.
William Fields, aye. Diane Singer. See Diane, Peter.
Yes.
Sarah Orla.
Aye.
Bonnie Bonafoni.
Aye.
Jason St. Peter.
Aye.
Anne Hutchinson, yes. William Boyd.
Yes.
And the little one, Brian.
Sorry, William.
Steve Bannon absent, and I vote favor, motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
So the next one is really a procedural, but I think in front of the ordinary packets, a list of school committee dates for next year. And the division is, we'll set a separate one, but planning some committees dates line up with this, and this lines up with all the town meetings and the like. So it leaves us, mostly it's two years a month, a little less in the summer, and it leaves us time that it happens. The motion approved, the school committee calendar is so moved. Second.
Second.
Any questions, concerns?
It's come up a couple times with the whole in-person for virtual, and I don't know if we've done any more right, or are we just kind of continuing along?
We'll work it out. Till twenty five, yes, so we can continue to do this type right there. Yeah, and people can be, if you hire them, still, I think, live means or citizens or whatever.
Till year twenty twenty five.
Yes, I mean, what is it, March twenty five? I vote for the board. Well, we're not before that, we're here now. Yeah, 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 so that's okay. Any further questions, Hannah? I will move the vote, Corey Sprague.
Aye.
Diane Singer.
Yes.
William Fields. Sarah Orla.
Aye.
Bonnie Bonafoni.
Aye.
Jason St. Peter.
Aye.
Anne Hutchinson.
Yes.
William Boyd.
Yes.
Steve Bannon absent, and I vote favor, motion carries.
Great, thank you.
There's more going on with our just meeting, if we want to share the, for all matters that we have voted for, if some numbers change, natural possible meeting. So that we're the voting members, voting actions. So the next one is the request to have seven, a waiver for seven eighth graders to participate in a cross-country. There's a little memo, I keep sharing that, we'll be quite explicit terms, so there's no middle school runners won't take the place of high school runners. It's a safe sport in terms of competition. There's no youth cross-country program, so we're not, we, it's just a youth program. And enrollment and team sizes or legislation is declining a little bit. And here's, so. You'd probably never protect eight boys and nine girls, so having some additional seven eighth graders would.
I have a question, for you want to?
What do we get motion, and second. The motion approved. I make a motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Two questions, first, just in regards to the numbers, the eight boys and nine girls, I would assume that would be the underclassmen that are returning, that's just taking out the that will be graduating, but it doesn't include any eighth graders that have shown interest.
Correct.
Okay, so here it could be a little hard. And then I didn't know, is this time sensitive? Does it have to be voted on now? The only reason I ask that is, does it make any sense to wait to see how everything went with the tennis? And just make sure that there are no lessons learned from that, and then vote on it?
I think, Christian might be able to speak to this, it is a little time sensitive, because we have to get the approval of the, like, the local athletic directors before it goes to the MSBA. So I actually think it probably does make sense to vote it now.
Yeah, and we have students generally sign off in the spring if possible, like they would communicate this to the rising students in sixth and seventh grade in June for next year, not wait until September if we get it. I would also say, this year for tennis, we offered this opportunity, we had one student who gave it a shot and joined one practice and decided they didn't want to do it. So just because you vote on it, doesn't actually mean we want to get any students to do it. We may, we're opening the opportunity, and we may get students who want to be cross-selling their running, and we may not. Do we vote on it, and we know why more middle school students did not join? And we, I don't think we did a hard push to get them, we communicated it, but I think if we really want to push harder, we put. I don't know that we do, I think we want to make people aware of the opportunity, and then we want to be supportive and inclusive of them joining. I think it was really hard for the one sole middle school student to be on a tennis team with all high school students, but I think that's a little overwhelming for a seventh grader or something. And they're asking to run the program for girls, and girls on the run program has been active at middle school.
And, right, the other reason that people know now is the folks who, not even on a beach, but a wonderful runner, but I think knowing that you're doing it going into the summer, so you can train appropriately, builds the foundation, so. So we may be during, during the season.
I would be putting off to August, I would be putting off to June, and we know how we're getting with the tennis, but it's, there you go, you answered the question. So there's no need to wait it, yeah.
One other comment would be, I'm gonna go for it, you know, I've got to kind of fill all this topic, but I think for my personal bacteria, sports, I approve of this, we're now, I'm now here, I wrote, if that's seventeen, if there's sports on our, on the opening up the seventh eighth graders, maybe one of them. Um, maybe your eyes, but maybe I also. For the seventh eighth grade. Vote that. Any other questions, Hannah? Vote a vote, Corey Sprague.
Aye.
Diane Singer.
Yes.
William Fields. Sarah Orla.
Aye.
Bonnie Bonafoni.
Aye.
Jason St. Peter, aye. Anne Hutchinson.
Aye.
William Boyd.
Aye.
Steve Bannon is absent, and I vote favor, so carries, carries bridges to the air of the second, and you may not want to take it now, but there are two members of the public. Oh. We gotta, we gotta move this, you wanna do the, the next, and then we'll come back, and we'll do a summary a couple times. Okay. So the next one, and I'll explain this, and Steve Soul is on the line as well, and Kevin's speak to it. He's needed, or as he said, capital of project expenditures reallocation proposal. So we, if you read the memo, or you should have read the memo, the recommendation is over time, some needs change, some additional grant funds come in, and we just want to reallocate some funds, but of course, that we take for it. Importantly, not for more money, we're just asking to move money around. The remaining balance is a little under four hundred S dollars, so three seventy-five, five forty-one. And there's a list of items there. That's been, I guess, was anticipated, but not totally, maybe we're placing things in the geothermal heating system at the middle school, and then pumps in the water hall, those are really big ones that stand out. And operating playground at a high school for the early childhood students, which is tied to our chapter seventy-four program for early, early childhood. So I think it's, it's fairly self-explanatory, smaller things that are, a smaller that I can speak to, and or Steve, the Steve, and it listed. If you've got not really great other questions.
Just discuss that, that look, it was, yeah. I guess I'm gonna go to the second quarter, I have time. So it's basically a normal meeting, which is Steve explaining to us this, this whole issue, and I'll let Steve talk, they don't have to watch. But I mean, basically, you know, the wastewater treatment, the pump there, which is services all preschool, twelve, water valve pumps, the two of those, which is seventy thousand, those, you know, unexpected things that obviously surprised, and it hasn't come up more in the last ten years that they've missed. But just, you know, we have these huge, you know, systems that run three, they build these, but you know, how many thousand, thousand plus people, so you know, these things are gonna come up, it is this year for those two, and then again, the middle school, the well water, well pump replacement, and then the circulating pump for the geothermal, just again, those schools are about eighteen years old now, and they're starting to, you know, and then the end of their life cycles. Obviously, the early childhood program, fifteen thousand, we want to get that, something for, that's pretty solid, it's going to rate, and they're studying the truck, you know, eighteen thousand dollars more. As anybody knows, trying to buy cars, especially trucks, so now we've allocated fifty thousand more than that, and that's just the price you have to pay these days. But that was basically, yeah, and then, you know, sprinkle in some of the stuff that we wanted to continue, as far as the high school goes, with the smart boards, whiteboards, heat protectors, cafeteria tables, et cetera, you know, we still want to think about the kids there, and we actually took it for after our meeting, for, it's been a few years since the committee, and there's some new members. You know, we got the steamy actual cafeteria tables, and how beat up, you know, inappropriate they are at this point, as well as all the other things. That's basically it. Sarah, Bill, do you have anything else?
I was just gonna say, everything that's been done, actually, we transported to the future runway or new building, so it's not gonna be just a process. And although the tech stuff, the smart boards and whatnot, that was identified as a need during our budget process lunch with the finance committee, and the administration articulated that they thought they could find an alternative funding mechanism, which is there. So that was, that's how I identified it, early on, the process.
First, does Steve have anything else to say? Anything you want to add, done?
Yeah, you guys did a good job covering that, and I think the only thing to add would be, one of the reasons we have this money available to us is we have a few of the projects, the original projects we did with in-house staff, and then also with that Department of Justice grant, we were able to shift a lot of the cost of a few other of the projects that were originally on the list under that, so it just freed up some money, which was good, because we had a couple of surprises that were the geothermal system.
Any other questions for?
Yeah, you want me to ask a question now, or after?
We've already jumped into the foundation, so.
There's two other things that came up at some point, and I didn't know where they were, we talked about chairs. Many know that one happened. And then the outdoor classroom, at some point, we were talking about a second outdoor classroom. And we had been talking about the second outdoor classroom, the first outdoor classroom, I would say the amount of use it's getting would justify us spending more funds right now on an additional outdoor classroom. Chairs for teachers, we have been doing rotation in offices, I can't tell you exactly which ones have been replaced, but we are like annually, you know, replacing ones that are kind of falling apart and disrepair with new ones, so.
Bill, you have?
Yes, I do. I made a motion to realpay eighteen thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars for the success of the existing balance in the capital projects of lava fund. From funds previously approved by the school committee, cover the full cost of the new truck, flat, and assembly platform. I throw the motion for the same existing funds to allocate. Fifteen thousand dollars for the childhood playground high school, necessary as part of high school's chapter four seventy-four application for the early childhood program. Ten thousand dollars WWTF additional pump, forty thousand dollars well pump replacements, thirty thousand dollars circulating pump for geothermal, seventy thousand dollars water valve pump, all of which are critical, not going on very busy. Twenty seven thousand five hundred dollars for smart boards for the elementary school, thirty thousand five hundred whiteboards for the high school, five thousand C P projectors, as we even across the district. Thousand five hundred dollars tables at the high school, sixty seven thousand dollars additional for children project at the elementary school, the total of which is two hundred and ninety-five thousand five hundred dollars.
Second. 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 Any further comments or? Vote. Diane Singer. William Fields, yes. Sarah Orla. Bonnie Bonafoni.
Aye.
Jason St. Peter, aye. Anne Hutchinson, excuse yourself, William Boyd.
Aye.
Steve Bannon is absent, and I vote favor, motion carries. Definitely, I'll just move that. So we think that's all the motions we had, and it looks like we had a first new comment we, we lost. I imagine they both wanted to speak in favor, or? I know it's a lot of Scott, it's also because of the current product, so everyone wants to speak in favor, and then it passed, but and the fact that you have the right to speak in any country, not every different, so, all kind of, yes, okay. Good, so please just let West Sheriff, active Sheriff, do you go back to the top, or do you get them? Yes. So what are we gonna, who says the minutes were in your, that is February ninth, February sixteen, March ninth, that we can make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Proven seconded, any discussion out there? Diane, Corey Sprague. Diane Singer.
Yes.
William Fields, yes. Sarah Orla.
Aye.
Bonnie Bonafoni.
Aye.
Jason St. Peter.
Aye.
Anne Hutchinson. William Boyd.
Aye.
Steve Bannon absent, Richard Hoen, yes, carries.
Sorry.
Peter, I'll see that, you take over. Yeah, so, and I just want to make sure, we don't have students with us tonight, do the principals want to share something? Or leave some highlights?
Yeah.
And there's a new item there, so you might need more as you move back.
Excellent. So just a couple of things, I wanted to publicly thank Lydia Johnson, because it was her green child to hold Paraprofessional Appreciation Day at Muddy Grove on Wednesday, prior to the professional development for the day, so we had tacos, and they all left with succulents and lots of fun little writings from the little kiddos, and that was all three buildings. So they much appreciated that. A couple of thorns, and it has been sort of solved in a way, and some that we're continuing to work on. I'm not sure if it's spring fever, but there's been a bit of meanness and physical stuff surfacing in the elementary school, so we're doing more pushing to classrooms to try to work with kiddos around that, and lots of mediation. Happy to say that one of our thorns was that we did not have a well-functioning PTA pretty much since I came, it fell completely apart last year halfway through the year, but they held a new election yesterday, so they have a full complement of new officers, and probably about twenty people who showed up, and they're committed to making it much more, you know, fruitful for the kids, because they're used to that tradition from the sounds of it, and there's been a lot of things done over the years, so that's good news.
Yes, for middle school, we had our middle school musical, You're a Good Man, John Brown, who's amazing, as always, with this amazing production crew that we have, and direction crew, we're so happy about that. And then in addition, tonight, I'm actually leaving in five minutes, but we're going to see the Shakespeare and Company production of the seventh grade, with Romeo and Juliet, but something that I love, love, love about a school is it's all in, so if you want to be in, You're a Good Man, John Brown, you can just say, I want to be on stage, or I want to be a star, I want to be a small role, and the directors and producers rewrite it, same thing with Shakespeare, entire seventh grade, all five sections appeal, like every single student is in the production. The only is gonna come tonight, just everybody goes to be a part, it's a great lead-in, I think, for kids going to high school. And then it's been spirit week at the middle school, so we had decade day, seventies, eighties, and nineties, we've had today was dressed formally, lots of kids in ties, and dresses, and tuxes, and whatnot, tomorrow, we're having a pep rally that the student council has put on, period G, the end of the day, all the teams are gonna dress in their colors, and do fun, silly activities, and just go into vacation in a weird way, I just love the middle school, for the fact that every kid gets to be a part.
All right, high school, we also had our spring musical, Fiddle on the Roof, which was very successful, and I want to give a public thank you today, as in stepping up to be our director this year, he did a fabulous job, we had a great team of people around him, working with him, from the actual pit band director to the choreographer. It was, it was really a great production, I got to see him on opening night, and my two sister-in-law's went for the closing show, and it was a really great experience for all the kids involved. Our sports teams, the spring sports is underway, and we've actually had some really early successes in some of our spring sports this year, so we're excited about all of that. On the in-school front with teachers, our instructional leads since March have been doing with their ILG groups an instructional round, and the instructional round we're doing is looking at what we, it's a document called Elements of Effective Instruction, and the instructional practice that the teachers themselves chose as their focus is feedback. And they have, in the past couple of weeks, been engaged in peer observations with one another, we canceled the meeting for one week, so that they had more time within their schedules to actually get into each other's classrooms, and the whole goal of getting into each other's classrooms is to look at ways in which teachers are giving feedback to students, ways in which students give feedback to each other, ways in which students are asked to do self-reflection, and then how students are being asked to use that information. And so it's really been about collecting data of those practices as a school, we were fortunate, a couple of weeks ago, on March thirtieth, Josh Thomas's, who's been working with us on some of these initiatives, he joined us and was with us all day on the thirtieth, and joined the IL's instructional leads in observations of classes, and they visited fifteen classrooms that day, and collected data, and Josh met with teachers when he was in district yesterday for our half-day to give teachers feedback, what he saw in terms of like a positive, and then a negative, he did believe each person. So that has been some really amazing stuff, I think for us right now, the thorn has been, we are really still short-staffed, particularly in our RISE program, which is our substantially separate program. So it's a thorn, but for me personally, there was a little bit of a rose, because last week, I actually spent a lot of my time on the floor in that program with those students, and it is joyful to be with them and work with those kids, so, yeah, that's what's going on with us.
Great, thanks, thanks, everybody, and all of us. So I just wish I didn't miss anything, so I have a little knowledge of tennis courts, we used to, many, you know, that the ball was very great, and many people, that's made me to talk about, they had some lines painted on some of our tennis courts, so we are reading that word, and you should go on, I hope we're all on the cloud, right, and pick all the differences in the audience. But the tennis courts exist there on exactly the land that was purchased by Arden Mountain School Center Inc., and, and they donated that land to the district, it includes the tennis courts, but it's also the site of the baseball fields, soccer fields, and J B softball field, so the Portugal Spence Association played a role in fundraising for that, and it did work in collaboration, but it's really important to remember that my rent, School Center Inc., purchased that land, so that's an historical context for it, the other side of it is, is what's on the football. During school hours, the courts preserve for our own people, run our students in classes, and boys and girls tennis, the as a side effect, we were having a community for six and seven, particularly for football, and they'll be there are different ways to put lines on a court, but those two tennis courts wound up being four pickleball courts, because the pickleball court is much smaller, so wanting to stop, stop, or just give it on their courts right out the door there, and it was sort of, I just want to get some professional tennis, sludge of all, be thirsty, and to do that, and intersect in with people, and we're being thankfully, quite, with Aaron Smith, and Travis she's on, I have to share the great, great, Mark's mission, and a very active member, and, and I don't want to give a loop. The other important is the, our, our courts exist on school grounds, and people need to follow state law on school grounds, and then, you know, bring on the tennis court and the ball courts, and, you know, use my lawn, the tennis court, the ball courts, in addition to that, you know, seat board on the tennis court, perfect, of course, so let's support it, probably, any questions about it?
I know people posted on the courts.
They are. We'll post them again, and we'll post them on our website and all the rest. Uh, uh, and, and we're sorry, we're not a country club, and we don't have the staff that, that manage it like a lifeguard would swimming pool. So, so for the moment, it's on the honors system, uh, and if someone or some staff said, or many people disregard the guidelines, then, um, then all sorts of things could happen, including maybe the courts out of it. But, uh, I'm hopeful with clear guidance and, and things that will, this is time to, now, um, some session of, uh, prohibition use in the school position. I don't, I have to go down and look at it again, and it's slightly time to upgrade, um, all the side, and it may make sense. Even for all of this on one side, it's to have like a, a quick code that links to a, a place on our website where, where there could be five pages of guidelines. I hope people use common sense and that old thing about, uh, leave a place better than you found it, which is to bring balls down and like take your balls away, you know, leave the sharp metal things, you know, like the hot tucks from the dance. And particularly the substance use, uh, in, in, if you do that, you're doing your own rest, which the, the consequences in Massachusetts, which are very high, uh, even, even today.
Are there any sources of revenue coming in to maintain the courts, other than what the school and district put into them?
No, and, and I don't know, so speed on the line, I've lost, um, uh, no, not now. And that's something we could explore, but that Portraits and Stance Association, uh, uh, runs a summer program. I will see for our students in that summer program, so that's their in-time contribution. Uh, but, um, I'm open to, to have a conversation about that. The courts, I played on them the other day, uh, my son destroyed me, he's always the same. But, uh, they're, they're in a little rough shape, and they're sort of like the bottom hole today, like get a little crack, and then cringe, and there's water, and it freezes and expands and on and on. So, um, um, in the context of a, a high school project, uh, we're waiting to do something, like, there.
I do know, I think it discussed this a year or two ago, but the voters and the balance has been over that. Those courts at the end of the life cycle, it's hard, it's just putting a, filling and doing the patchwork, and we're going to be needing a really extensive kind of makeover, uh, sometime, you know, within the next five, ten years. Um, uh, so, I mean, again, that's something that we don't have to look at immediately, but that's coming down the road. Whether we're going to want to spend that money, or if we do, how are we going to fund it, whether it's for the else or kind of a plus, plus anyone else who wants to hop in. But again, that's something that, you know, ten years from now, those courts are actually coming. Whether it's three or four years, it's under English, I would say.
Yeah, and, and C-Pads, uh, they're just, I mean, they like cut out sections and fill it with epoxy and fiberglass and refinish it, but you can only do that so, so long. So that's the, that's the tennis court, uh, or really just all the court. Uh, so.
We're facing in five years with us, big expenditure. You know it's coming?
Hmm.
Sure.
But, but it's actually.
Put something in the next year's project.
It could be executed or, or could potentially be folded into a broader high school project. Yeah, um, and, and I think we could really go, uh, e- either way on that. If the buildings are, should talk about it, then we should talk, to share about it from a, um, a financial perspective. But I'm a little torn to do something before we get design a high school project, but it's like, like we do courts, and then part of a high school project is, is to use some of that space for, like, they got to.
Or you can destroy it for a staging area, and people that work, and I think which kids spending money now.
Right. Um, okay. Uh, so, that reminds me, one of the last, so we had, last night, another, uh, sign incident, like a, uh, hoax call to the school. Uh, this one, we learned quite a bit, we responded faster. We didn't put the other two buildings, uh, in lockdown, the police work ethic was really good, and the state troopers are messaging was, was clearer and, uh, and faster. Um, so, uh, that's sort of, that's what we're doing. We continue to work on our two Department of Justice grants and investing those resources, uh, into both, uh, physical upgrades and, and additional training. And I often don't talk about this a lot, because I mean, public section is to do so with a couple of these things. But, but some of the stuff that we can't talk about are, are more radios and antennas and, uh, different ways of electronically communicating, uh, and, and more, uh, more, uh, cameras across all the buildings. Um, it also is a funny road, uh, you know, is the, uh, it's very familiar, it's Mr. Tin Game, and like Mr. Tin does.
Yes.
We know, uh, so they're reflective kids, uh, money road, and, and, and race. Uh, and, and that's going to happen at the boys. But lots of, lots of little, uh, little steps and aggregate, they, they all, they all went up.
Yeah. The police investigation, uh, this is called.
They, they are, but, yeah, we've talked about it a lot about it. It's really at like, uh, the level of the FBI or, or, or one of those other alphabet soup organizations, uh, it, it's not, it's not quite like it's on TV. Like, somebody stays out for sixty seconds and you trace, they're all, you think it's all for the computers and VPNs and, and other things. But, but it appears that, that in all of these instances, we were one of fifty to a hundred schools contacted, and they all were essentially kind of quite the same person organization, uh, or, or people. So I'm not, I'm not optimistic. I really like to look at the police talking about all the time, but I'm not optimistic. They can track it down. Something may happen at the, the FBI level. It may be parallel, whether it's for the, or, there are all those catalytic converters, and it's all in. And what for, of course, I'm frustrated about it, and finally, again, I have one of them. Uh, and it's a half-dollar catalytic converter, right? So, uh, I, I'm optimistic that the FBI will make it. Uh, but, but I'd like to say it's, it's disruptive. It's our, uh, students and families and staff, uh, and, uh, we keep trying to work, uh, for them. Uh, regional school planning boards, it's chugging away. They are making more and more progress on the, on the, um, draft regional agreement. I, I think it's probably likely that the board will take some action on that in the next six weeks or so. And that used to be interesting. And then the other one, it's the intersection contract warning system was installed. Uh, there are lots of flashing lights, stop signs, sensors, uh, at, at high school. And, uh, and I appreciate that the department has prediction made that estimate, uh, and I'm optimistic with that. It's just another tool, a toolbox to get people to be aware.
Each of the solar powered, uh, things we put up the page.
Yeah, so we, we, it's, that's part of it. And then on the crossbeam for the yellow flashing lights, lights that go over seven, there are sensors, and then coming from the south and the north, there are flashing lights. So if you're on seven and somebody's about to pull out, you're notified of that. And if you're the one about to pull out and cars are coming, uh, the stop sign there flashes. And the, the yellow sign, though, in yours to stop bridge, also flashes. So it, it, it doesn't solve the problem, but it mitigates, uh, I think some of it. And, and Twine Islands were one of, only a handful of places in the whole Commonwealth that, that got that. So we're, I was gonna say, I thought it was completely.
I was thinking of the cars and getting the fist bumps.
Yeah. Right, and that's all like Star Drive, Booty's River Drive, the, 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 yeah. Yeah, and, and, I think, I think it's interesting, and it's a step in the right direction there, and, and, and it does. Uh, that car didn't have it all the time. You notice it, yeah.
It's a dangerous description.
Yeah. Um, uh, and then the building, uh, that is made a process, so all much stuff's in. We're anticipating that they're, uh, going to bend their board, uh, uh, needing, uh, uh, in a couple of weeks and develop this to the next, uh, the next stage of, of the process. No, no, it's, no, it's, sorry. Yeah, but I think it's exciting, because the next step is to become our project manager, and then to pick in architect or architects and designers, uh, and, and, and very busy very quickly. Um, so, uh, subcommittees?
Yeah, all subcommittee.
And then, uh, building the grounds?
Yeah, yeah, I'm under court, you. Yeah, yes, um, just to actually touch on Corey's point, during our, uh, tour of the building, we did notice the, uh, uh, staff, chairs, desks, um, I think it was this social studies room, we did have all new, uh, new, new ones, but the English and foreign language ones definitely needed upgrading, and be assured that that was in his budget for this summer. I forgot the science, but he just said that it's definitely in this budget, planned to do itself.
They were, they were actually updated before the social starts.
Okay. I forget, maybe I'm getting mixed up, but one of them looked pretty good, and one of them not looked good at all.
You are, you are, the English and foreign language link is what it still needs.
Oh, that's, yes.
Sorry.
No, no, that's.
Sue heard that value mention, Anne's not here, but I don't think that you guys have met. Uh, finance has not met. Um, negotiation subcommittee?
We have met, uh, so we're, we're doing two sets of negotiations with the collaborative group, which is, uh, restoring clean, it's food service, some technology. I think that's it. Uh, we met with them once, and we met, uh, with the paraprofessionals once, and sort of set dates, just started to decide what's open and what's out of it. Uh, and we reversed timelines for both, and hoped to, uh, but the end of that, which we also is coming up.
Uh, personnel report.
Uh, I don't claim any, uh, secret.
Any home business?
Can I ask, did it ever regular? Did they, did, or is that, I, maybe it's that's over five, or is it dropped floating around that?
Again, plus.
Right, yeah.
We had a comfortable reading to, to share, or share.
Well, I certainly have.
To be honest, I'm not.
If there is another one, I know that's up the eye. Uh, if you, anyone in the youth business? I do, if you're hungry, uh, either can't take out or go to the lobby tonight, it's a dime for the senior class. You go around your phone, maybe something just did, uh, so that's, that's my new business. Uh, any, oh, no. Is he there to go eat?
Either you, or you're sorry. And there, go. Fair.
Hi, guys. Thank you. Uh, am I supposed to, I forget if this is the meeting I'm supposed to say where I live. I'm, um, I wanted to just talk about two things really quickly. Um, one was that, um, I'm aware that the Stoke Collective is wrapping up their contracted time with the, uh, school district and, in kind of a closing out interview that I had with, um, one of the members of Stoke Collective, the same person I'd had an introductory interview with, they're kind of reaching out to, um, people have been involved in the process or, or who originally, like, spoke to them about things they'd like to see changed or ways to support the school district. Um, it occurred to me that I just, I, I think I've brought it up before, but I just would really, I'm hopeful that as part of their wrap-up report, it will be something that is made public to the, to the school committee, and also that we, um, you know, hear their report back possibly during the school committee meeting. And I'd also, it just occurred to me, I just lost the thread of what was going on with them. So I would love to know what has changed over these years that Stoke Collective has helped to, um, to facilitate changes. Like, I know some things that are happening, but I'd love to know what is a direct result of Stoke Collective's involvement um, in their work to address the issues that were, were in their initial report about ways that our district was not doing a great job being, um, inclusive and equitable. So that's one thing. And the second thing is, um, I have a feeling Peter's heard about this from a number of people already, but that communication survey was super frustrating. And I, yeah, I, you know, I have to imagine that I'm somebody who's reading more fine print and, you know, reading everything more than the average person, and, uh, I couldn't get through it. It was like, it felt redundant and just so overly verbose. It was really, um, frustrating. And I, and I am curious what the next steps are around that.
Yeah, so, let me just briefly talk about, um, the, the so people will be coming and doing a, a, a fairly big, it might be the fall of all, um, one of, is we ask that to, if you told, like, we're trying to have, um, growth, maybe also with the growth areas that, that continue to exist and, and work with us cleverly to, to map out some things we can continue to work on. So, uh, that'll likely be one of the meetings, maybe it'll be the June meeting. Uh, the, the survey, um, I, you're not the first person who shared that feedback with me. Uh, but, but on the other hand, uh, maybe other, yeah, we're a lot of odd people. Um, and, um, and I get that it's, it's frustrating. I think the content they were trying to get is important, but how it's presented and the forced choices and some of the other things are hard. And it's sort of ironic because, uh, the, the people that are doing it are communications.
It feels like ironic might be the nicest word to use for it, since I imagine you're paying them a fair amount of money.
Right, uh, um, what, um, one of the things that they did also offer and try to get at was that it's, uh, they'll get some information from that survey, and then they're going to run in our office groups. Uh, and, and one of the things I'm doing is anybody who, uh, who's thoughtful enough to write that or like you talk about it being, um, uh, not great or comedy or terrible, whatever word you want to use. I'm going to try to connect them again with, uh, the participate in, uh, in the focus group, and, and we can, we can, uh, dig, dig a little more. But, um, I, I share your concern, uh, and, and I hope we can still get some good information. Uh, I think that's all for some, so.
Thanks for that, Peter. I mean, my big concern with it is not just that it was annoying or whatever, but if I couldn't, if I didn't get through it, then how many other people just didn't even bother trying, you know?
No, no, and so I don't, I don't, I send it to people, but I don't even have access. No, no, and it's like, I don't, I don't, I send it to people, but I don't even have access to analyze the data. So um, I I know that I'm a phone hall folks around, how many people are replying and how how uh frustrated people are. The other, that's um, and I said now my own surveys, I would all tend to leave a uh uh box at the end for open ended comments. And while it's uh challenging to keep doing hard and analyze code and make sense of it, we could get several hundred. Uh, uh, sometimes the the boxes don't, don't let people share their story. Uh, and and that's probably what's most frustrating about this.
Alright, thank you for that.
Well, thanks for, thanks for uh following us out on it, I very truly appreciate it.
You can always count on me for that.
Do you know more comment? Uh, by Ian's seven, he stands there. We're doing the ten, we have our first. Oh, we have. That's sorry, I'm sorry, you're, the forward meeting stands there, uh, there's a motion to go into executive session. So.
Certainly.
So uh, there's a motion uh on the table to go into executive session. Uh, pursuant to the general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A, a review, discuss strategy, respect application. Hold this discussion, open session, have a head travel of that connotation. All executive sets for school committee will adjourn. As rule, first break.
Aye.
Sarah Orla.
Aye.
Jason Simeon, aye. Phil Boyd.
Aye.
Willie Field. Yes. Bonnie on the phone.
Aye.
And the citizens, go over here, Diane's there.
Yep.
He's been this absent and I vote, uh, yes, so with that, motion carries and we shall enter a debate session. Right, so I'm gonna.